Good evening, everybody. This is the Carver Zoning Board of Appeals. We're coming to you from Room 4 in the Carver Town Hall. It is November 17, 2020. We are down a couple of members tonight because of health issues. But I'm happy to say that we have our newest alternate with us all the way to the end, with the laptop in front of her is Kelly DeCarly. And to my immediate left, longtime board member Eric Mueller. On the end over there, the gray sleeveless vest, is Fran Mello. Also longtime member, the longest member of all, but the youngest is Sharon Clark, the vice chair of this committee, of this board. I'm Stephen Gray, the chairman of this board, at least for this year. This evening, we have one case. But before we get into that case, we're going to be going to a couple of administrative matters first. I'd like to address the minutes from our last meeting of September 29, 2020. And as is my custom, I circulate a draft copy of these minutes without comment to all of the board members so that they can familiarize themselves with the minutes. Sometimes they're quite detailed and they go on for a number of pages. So rather than sitting here and waiting for everybody to digest them, I send them out in advance and I ask now whether everybody got their copy.
Yes.
Yes? And Mr. DeCarly?
Yes.
Does anyone have any amendments, modifications, or changes that they would like to make to these minutes?
No.
Everybody good? All right. So we have a board of five available to vote on the acceptance of these minutes. And I ask now for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes I've written.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good. So these minutes of our last meeting, September 29, 2020, are now part of the official record. They are accepted as is. Thank you for that, everybody. We have one case on for this evening. By way of background for everybody, and also for you at home, we've already had two public hearings on this particular petition. And because the presentation was extended last time on September 29, and there were other cases in back of that that we were trying to get to, we did as much as we could the last time, again, the second public hearing, and decided to have this case continue to this evening, a third public hearing date. And the case to which I'm referring is case number 9-0-R, the petitioner being Donald J. Correa, as trustee of 12 Pond Way Realty Trust, seeking variances pursuant to Section 2320 or a special permit pursuant to Sections 2253, 5221, and 5300, and Sections following of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located at 12 Pondview Way in Carver, which is at accessory map 9-Lot 0-R, due to the fact that the applicant is moving the location of a single-family house footprint in a residential agricultural district. Before we get going tonight, I'd like to observe, for the record, that we are now down to a voting board of three on this matter because of illnesses and quarantining. Mr. Jermaine, who would have been our fourth tonight, which would have provided us with an outright corps, did not come in with a mask or a shield and has left because masks and shields, as I understand it, are mandatory. So we are down to Mr. Mueller and Ms. Clark and myself. And because we are a board of three at this point, I invoke the rule of necessity, meaning that we would not otherwise be able to make a decision on this case unless that rule of necessity were invoked, because this is necessary for us to go ahead and proceed on the merits of this particular case. Mr. Mueller, do you have any objection to that?
I do not.
And Ms. Clark?
I do not.
Okay. So please let the record reflect that all board members agree that the rule of necessity, which I'm invoking, is necessary under the unusual circumstances of these times. And I now want to proceed on the merits of this case. So Mr. Correa, who I observe is here, has now been advised that we have the board down to three members, which will require, of course, a unanimous decision for relief of whatever sort we deem as appropriate to be granted. Let the record also reflect, as I said before, that this is our third public hearing on this matter. And those who have been following this case, including those of you in the audience tonight, know that the petitioner has presented now not once but twice his argument in favor of being granted relief. The second public hearing, he was allowed a substantial block of time to present his case. Let the record reflect as well that he has filed no less than three legal memos in support of his request for relief, the most recent of which came to me on Friday afternoon, Friday the 13th. So we are in possession of a lot of information, all from the petitioner's side. We have heard as well from members of the public, some of whom have expressed some concern about what is being requested here. I have not really had a chance to go into my thoughts about this case, and I choose to do that now. First of all, Mr. Correa, you have expressed on a couple of occasions in your memos that the public notice, in this case, indicated that the relief for which you were seeking was expressed in the alternative, special permit versus variances. Do you have any objection to that, Mr. Correa?
My only request was that the board act on both aspects of the...
Do you have any objection to the fact that the public notice asked for relief, from your standpoint, in the alternative, either as a special permit or as variances? Do you have any objection?
No. So long as the board acts on both applications.
If the board chooses not to act on both applications, actually, it's one application, if the board chooses to act only in reference to relief as to a special permit or in the alternative of variance, do you have any objection to that?
I do, because we prepared this whole argument based on an either-or analysis.
No, that's not true. Your memos have consistently expressed argument in the alternative.
Right.
And I'm going to continue to assume that that is your position unless you are withdrawing your request for either the special permit or the variances.
No.
Okay. So let's proceed.
I'm fine.
Okay. I want to direct everybody's attention first to Section 2255 of the Town of Carver zoning 2255 says, or is titled, "Abandonment or Non-Use." And reading directly and quoting therefrom, "A non-conforming use or structure which has been abandoned or not used for a period of two years shall lose its protected status and be subject to all of the provisions of this zoning bylaw." Now, this particular bylaw, in my opinion, is applicable to the case at hand because the structure on the property is a dilapidated, rundown, uninhabitable home that has been in that condition for at least the last 10 years. So Section 2255, by its express terms, seems to apply in this case. Now, Mr. Correa, in his memos, has suggested, and I don't disagree with this, that for a non-conforming use or structure to be considered abandoned, there must be an occurrence of two factors, two factors to qualify as an abandoned structure or lot. First, the intent to abandon, and second, voluntary conduct, whether affirmative or negative, which carries the implication of abandonment. Now, again, in this case, nobody has been there for at least the last 10 years. And in my opinion, for what it's worth, I think that we can say that this structure and/or this lot have been abandoned or not used, which is the other language which is contained in the bylaw. Now, Mr. Correa, you have raised some, or quoted from some cases in your memos, directing your attention to the Dial-Away case from 1996 and the Berliner case from 1973. You quote the following language, "The voluntary demolition of a building constitutes abandonment." And I would agree with that. I also would note that it is your intent in this case to raise the structure that is on that property. I would certainly say that's a voluntary demolition. And so, again, I think that based on the language from those two cases, which you quote yourself, that we're dealing with a voluntary demolition, and that this will constitute, under those two cases, abandonment. We would also say that it hasn't been used. That's the alternative language, abandonment or not used. Now, you quote as well from the Sherrill-Loosie case, which is out of Wareham, and also the Baldassini case, as supportive of your position that there is no abandonment in this case. The Sherrill-Loosie case, the Wareham case, you described that in that particular fact pattern, the structure was destroyed in a hurricane. It's not what we have here. In the Baldassini case, the dwelling was destroyed by a fire, not what we have here. Both of those structures were considered to be abandoned in those particular instances. In this case, we have a situation where you have expressed to us that it is your intent to raise that structure. I'm not saying that's a good thing or a bad thing. All I'm saying is that that seems to fall under the intent of the particular bylaw at issue here, 2255, that this particular property and/or structure have been abandoned or not used. And that's critical because once we get past these cases, which, in my humble opinion, do not apply to the fact pattern in this case, nor do the cases that have been quoted really apply in this particular instance either, the rest of that bylaw, as I read before, says that if it has been abandoned or not used, this property, for a period of two years, it shall lose its protected status and be subject to all of the provisions of the Carver zoning bylaw. And this was a pre-existing non-conforming structure that had been there for many years. So it can stay there for two years, it inherits its protected status, but after two years, if it's abandoned or not used, it then becomes subject, anything down the road in terms of additional construction, it becomes subject to all of our current bylaws and zoning. Now, there has been some talk in this case about the applicability of the Comstock case, one that I brought up. It's a brand-new case, August of 2020, that came out of the Appeals Court, Massachusetts, and whether that case requires that it be a special permit that should be granted in this case as opposed to variances. The Comstock case is a case where the petitioner was allowed to proceed on the basis of a special permit. This was a garage that was deteriorated, and they wanted to put up a replacement garage in the same footprint, but the height was too tall for the existing bylaw. This was a Gloucester case, if I recall correctly. Again, this case, I feel, is not applicable to what we have going on here. Comstock also refers to the Dedrick case, which is an important case. And both of these cases stand for the proposition that if a petitioner is introducing a new nonconformity as a result of the project that he or she wants to proceed with, then it's got to be by way of variance, not by way of special permit, but by way of variance. So I would direct the board's attention to the Comstock case and the Dedrick case. Comstock at 98 Mass. Appeals Court 168, and Dedrick, which is a Chatham, ZVA case, at 85 Mass. Appeals Court 539. It's a 2014 case. So once we get through the first two steps of this analysis, the first step, remember, being that our bylaw, 2255, applies in this particular case because it's an abandoned or non-used property for at least two years. It therefore becomes subject to our current zoning. And so the next question becomes, well, is it a special permit or is it a variance situation? And again, due to these two cases, and how I read them anyway, I believe that we're in a variance situation, not in a special permit situation. Now, the new nonconformity that takes it out of the special permit situation and into the variance situation is frontage, front setback, I should say, front setback. Now, the front setback that's required under current zoning is 50 feet. And here, the petitioner is drawing the attention of the board to conversations that he had a couple of years ago with the Conservation Commission in town, where he and/or his engineer believed that they were being instructed by the Conservation Commission to move the proposed property or proposed project from the existing footprint, where the dilapidated house is, up away from the pond and the wet area in the back, closer to the road. And so complying with what they felt was a directive, or perhaps better put, a strong suggestion by the Conservation Commission, they complied and moved the proposed house closer to the road. In doing so, though, it created a nonconformity where none had existed before, because they were in compliance with the front setback rule under the Carver zoning bylaws. And as a result of moving, now they need a variance of nearly 30 feet because of having to move away from that lot. And that's important in terms of understanding why Comstock and Dedrick speak to a variance in this situation as opposed to a special permit, again, in my opinion. So if we're talking about variances, then we have to draw our attention to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48. And what that says is that for this board to grant a variance, it must be shown to us by the petitioner that there's something unusual about the topography, shape, or soil of the lot that would allow us cover, to, in essence, break the local bylaw and provide him with the relief that he's requesting so that he can get his project approved. Now, the memos, three of them, that have been provided by the petitioner, all talk about topography as being the unusual aspect of this particular property that would allow us to grant the requested variances under Massachusetts General Laws 48. For the life of me, and with all due respect to you, Mr. Correa, I don't understand that argument. I didn't understand it from the first time that I heard it, and I've thought about it since, I assure you, and I just don't see that there's anything topographically unusual about this lot that would give us cover to grant you the variances that you need to proceed with your project. So in my opinion, if topography is out, then the next question would go to shape. Is there anything unusual about the shape of this lot? And again, I don't see anything unusual about the shape of the lot. So that leaves us, by default, with the soil possibility. And there, much to my surprise, I guess you could say, I'm a little baffled by this, Mr. Correa, but you folks made no argument with regard to soil. Now, we know that in the back of this property, there is a pond and a wet area. And it seems to me that an argument could be made under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, that because of the soil conditions out in the back, and also, to an extent as well, their understanding as to the directive they were getting from the Conservation Commission a couple of years ago to move that house forward, that, you know, maybe there's some cover there, maybe there is an ability for us to proceed under 48 with variances based on the soil exception. So these are my thoughts at this point, and I want to solicit the opinion first of the vice chair and see what she has to say.
My thoughts came along the same lines. I've read all the materials and somewhat familiar with the cases, not to the extent of being able to read them as well as Mr. Chairman can. I don't see...I've been on this board for 30 years, at least. And the way we've handled these cases in the past has been, especially in abandoned property, we did a few over in the Bates Pond area, has been by way of variances. The shape of the lot, I mean, the shape of the lot and the size of the lot are what they are. The topography of this particular lot doesn't, again, doesn't have any outstanding features. It's not too hilly in the back and too hilly in the front, you have to put it here, or too rocky, or such as that. The only argument in the variance, and Mr. Chairman did point it out, that these are legal terms that we are bound by for any variance, whether it's a garage, raising a house and moving it, things of rebuilds of that nature, is the soil. In this case, we have wetlands that the Conservation Commission has identified and suggested that the house be moved so far away from these wetlands as to not impede on them. So in going through the same cases, special permit versus variances, I came to a very similar conclusion, that in the absence of a rebuild in the exact same spot, whereas none of us would be here, then this would be a variance under a soil condition for Chapter 48, Section 10. And then what are you talking about for variances? We have front setback, one side setback, lot size, and frontage. I do agree with the abandonment, your reasoning behind the abandonment, our bylaw for that, because there's a lot of such cottage lots and little cottage houses that were camps and summer homes and are no longer used. I know you bought this property maybe 15 years ago. I assume you've never spent a summer there. I don't think it has water. We discussed it doesn't have water, it doesn't have sewage, it doesn't have any of these things that need to make it habitable. So we know no one's lived there. There might be some raccoons, squirrels, I'm thinking. But buying an abandoned property and then saying it's up to the town to make it habitable, you're losing your First Amendment rights to make it habitable, I think is a little bit of a stretch. So I came to very much the same conclusions. I have some other thoughts when we get into the meat of the matter, but I'll hand it off to anyone else.
Mr. Mueller?
No, I agree.
Succeed. Andy brings me heart to heart.
Ms. Mello, anything you would like to add, even though you're not a voting member on this case?
I just want to say that I've sat here for a long time, also, not as long as several other members of the board, but this is a complicated one, a lot of legal arguments. And I just thank the chair for being able to navigate a lot of this for us.
Thank you. Mr. Carly, anything you would like to add?
I agree with Ms. Mello, this is a complicated legal matter. I agree with your opinion, Chairman, with Section 2255 as well.
Ms. Clark, you'd like to get into the meat, or the meatier aspects, or the down-to-the-weed aspects of this case?
Well, first, we can hear from the applicant.
I appreciate the effort the board has put into review, especially the chairman, into the matter. And it is a highly legal interpretation that would be relevant to making a proper determination. Like any applicant, hopefully my glasses, let me take my glasses off so they don't fog up. Like any applicant, you know, if relief is granted, the applicant's happy. I think that even granting a variance could be defended legally and would certainly do so. And from the input of the neighborhood that we've received in the last couple of meetings, and the conversations with, after the meetings, it does not appear like any of them would object, at the end of the day, to a granting of a permit of some kind. I think it really doesn't matter much to anybody whether that permit is under one umbrella or another. But let me speak to the issues, because I think, as a matter of public record, that I will state and take my exceptions to the different issues and interpretation of the cases that Attorney Gray has articulated. I'll do it in the order that was presented. First of all, on abandonment, totally disagree with the analysis of the chair. And the main reason is you can't create the abandonment by the very application that you're seeking relief. In the two cases, that you can't say, well, the applicant wants to build a new structure, but in doing so, raise the other one, therefore, that's the abandonment, that, I think in the law, we call that big in the question. It doesn't address the issue. In both cases, the hurricane and the fire, the owners took affirmative action to raise the structure. It may have been caused... It may have been caused by a natural event, but they took the intent to do that. In one of those, it was like 20 some odd years, and the Board said, even then, the Appeals Court said, or the Supreme Court even said, even then, we're hesitant to define that being abandoned. But they had 20 some odd years to rebuild after they raised the structure after the calamity, and therefore, we're going to determine that that was abandonment.
I don't want to get too deep into this, and I don't want to get into a legal back-and-forth with you about this that a lot of people in this room might not understand, but I do want to draw everybody's attention, including yours, Mr. Kriya, to the actual language of 2255, our Town of Carter bylaw that's pertinent here. And it's not just abandonment that we're talking about. That bylaw speaks to non-use as well.
Right.
So it's broad enough in its language to incorporate the factual situation that we have here, and I also want you to understand, as I'm sure you do already, that this Board has granted wide discretion in terms of how it interprets the language of its own bylaws. So let's go past that, understanding that you disagree with the sense of the Board on how that should be interpreted, and we'll listen to your next point.
Okay, well, in all due respect, Mr. Gray, I think it's important to address the issues that are on the table. I don't want to belate the timing of the meeting, but on the other hand, we're here in a special meeting, no one else is waiting, so I appreciate if you'd grant me the courtesy of the time.
I will grant you a brief minute or two on these points, Mr. Kriya, because you have given us three memos already.
Okay.
You had an uninterrupted opportunity at the last public meeting.
Mm-hmm.
I think probably as much as a half an hour where we sat and listened to you, and also you had an opportunity at the very first public hearing.
Right.
So it's our opportunity now, not yours, but our opportunity as a Board to weigh in on what we've heard already, which has been extensive.
Okay.
So we know what your arguments are. We know that you're going to disagree with some of them. So let's move on. Is there anything new that you want to add?
Well, I just think that, I have to, because you, because for the first time, the Chair has voiced the Board's opinion, or at least your own opinion, as you've been careful to say, about what these issues are, I just want an opportunity to respond to that.
I'm going to give you a couple more minutes. Let's go past the abandonment one, because we understand what you're saying. I personally disagree with your interpretation.
Okay.
But let's move on to your next point, quickly, please.
Well, I want to continue on that issue just for a couple of minutes. I think that's all.
I'm going to give you five minutes in total. We're at 7:35, and five minutes you have to be done.
The Dalloway case specifically says the voluntary demolition of a building constitutes abandonment, but non-use does not itself. And so I don't believe that despite 2255, which I've read clearly, you have to put that language in the context of, well, what does that mean legally? Okay? And I understand the issue is being an important issue to the overall application. In terms of the Gloucester case, that case is not dissimilar in the sense that in the Gloucester case and the Balladee case, you had non-conformity structures, they were dilapidated, they were isolated to the community, and so a new proposed structure was proposed, and it violated the existing parameters of the bylaw of that town. The decision by the Appeals Court wasn't interpreting the Gloucester bylaw itself, it was interpreting 48 to say, look, if there is a expanded, even increase in the non-conformity, that a special permit is still allowed so long as the Board does not determine that it was substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So this Board, if you're going to deny the permit under special permit, and again, if they granted under the variance, I'm happy, no problems, but substantially more detrimental, and can't conceive of the fact that the proposed structure is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And in fact, one issue that hasn't really been raised very much is the fact that although Joe Webby's outfit did bring up the structure close to the street, there's about a 16-foot differential between the 65-foot line that Joe Webby said at the opening of the Concom hearing, it's my understanding that Concom wanted us to move the structure out of the 65-foot zone, and he went ahead with his presentation. I watched the videos twice to be sure that I wasn't misunderstanding that, because Mr. Germain's discussion last week was very important, and I respected that. So, yes, they brought it up a little bit more, but I point out in my latest memo that has not been discussed previously, that if you brought it back more, you would increase the non-conformity on the sideline. So, and everyone here said, including the neighbors, that the land does slope substantially down to the pond, and it's certainly the best high and dry spot for the property, and that's probably why it was located there, is where the proposed location would have been. The Board has to understand that when Steve Kytowski first went into the Concom, we didn't want to move the structure at all. We wanted it right there, right where it was before, and would have been happy to walk out with the order of conditions to simply replace that. And we were encouraged to do that by Brick Monroe. And so it didn't happen that way. So they moved it back. So I guess, based on the best location, that's where, you know, he ended up. Now, as far as the requirement for a variance is concerned, to be honest with you, Mr. Gray, I don't think we had fully considered the word soil, which is a good point to make, and thank you for making it, really relates to the idea of the pond being the issue in the variance structure. So that's a, that's a very, you know, strong point. So if the soils include the land that abuts the pond and the pond behind, then yes, it's only, it's a basis for a variance to be granted? Sure. That makes perfect sense. Nobody addressed it, I don't think that Webby addressed it, in terms, because everyone thought that, well, we're moving it away from the pond, we're doing what the Concom seemed to ask us to do. I won't go as far as say instructed, because I re-reviewed that, and I don't think they forced anybody to do anything. But they said, come back with it out of the 65, fine, great, and it was unanimous, and the timing went and came back to the Concom, including Mr. Germain's acknowledgement and approval. So I guess if we're going to move it, and we're going to get it out of the 65 to satisfy the Concom, then this is the location that Webby picked, and it minimizes the sideline requirement and the non-conformity. And yes, it's still conforming, I mean, excuse me, it's still non-conforming, but it's not substantially more derogation to the community than the old structure would have been had it been rebuilt there. And in fact, one would hope, neighborhood would be strongly in support of the fact that, get rid of this old building, let's put up a new building, let's move it, and, you know, it's a tremendous advantage to the neighborhood. That's the ultimate issue involving, you know, the language of the statute.
Can I try to wrap up now, Mr. Kriya? I mean, a lot of this we've heard already, and we've read already. So if there's any final point you can make, and then I'd like to solicit more opinion from the Board, as well as from members of the public who are sitting here patiently.
Okay, well, the latest memo, the third memo, as you say, the second one was just a supplement to the first one, kind of outlines where we were at, and, you know, James Lang, okay, fine, the Board of Directors don't agree with that name, but whatever you call it, whatever you want, I think Joe Webby did a good thing by saying AKA, so it's one or the other, that doesn't matter, doesn't affect the plan at all. And so, as a result, you know, if you, the memos have been read, and I appreciate the fact you have, you know, stand on the arguments either for a special permit, which I believe strongly Gloucester supports, or variance, you know, either one. Substantial detriment is used, as you know, in both statutes. And 2255 is merely a reprint, reprint, almost exclusively, of the 48 language, and so, but the legal interpretation is necessary.
Okay. So thank you for those remarks, and wrapping up succinctly, we're grateful, and I assure the petitioner that all the members of this Board, including the non-voting members, have considered this case, have read through all of these memos, and read pertinent cases. And as we know, we can, reasonable minds can disagree about the interpretation of cases and bylaws. I think we can disagree without being disagreeable, and I believe that the cases that you have cited are not as strongly to the point as you suggest, for the reasons that I've already gone over, and I'm not going to go over them again, because it would take too much time. And I think I've indicated why it is that I believe these cases that you quote are not necessarily applicable to this situation, or only partially applicable. Now, I ask members of the public, anybody who would like to be heard on this, I would be happy to give them a couple of minutes to speak up. Would anybody like to make a comment? I see everybody indicating no.
I do have a question.
And could you identify yourself first and direct the question to me?
My name is Marty Colligan.
And what address are you?
13 Pondview Way.
Hi. And what is your question of the petitioner?
My question is, are you going through all this effort with the Boards only to sell it to someone else, and then have them start the process all over again?
Okay, before he answers, I have one to say on his behalf, and he's eloquent, and he can speak for himself. That's, I'm not sure that's really a pertinent question to be asking. He owns this property, the trust owns this property, and he has the right to develop it the way he feels he would like to develop it, once he is granted relief that he might be requesting from either the Conservation Commission or this Board. I will allow him to answer that question if he wants to, but I'm not going to draw any adverse inference if you choose not to.
My answer is I don't know. I think that came up last meeting as far as the ultimate situation, and so, once a permit would be granted, either way, I was going to sit down with a very local, hands-on kind of builder, I've already identified him, for the public record, Bob Peza, and try to go over the plans and develop a set of plans to submit to the Building Department. So at that point in time, we take one step at a time. It is my intent to actually get a building permit, if I were granting relief, in the name of the trust that owns it, which of them, the trust you have, and at that point, determine what, you know, what further might occur. If the question is, do I intend to, you know, move there myself, as a resident, the answer is no. Is the question, do I intend to utilize that in some way personally in the future? I don't know. And so I think the Chairman is right, that after that point in time, if it was to be built and sold, whatever, you know, it would be a single-family residence occupied by a person that would obviously live by everything that was needed in terms of granting their residency.
So Mr. Kriya did not have to answer that question, but has he answered it to your satisfaction anyway?
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir. Your name and address.
I'm Marty Colligan, 13 Pondview Way.
Hi, Marty, good evening.
Good evening. I spoke at the last meeting.
Yes, you did.
Okay. And I just want to speak on something that he had said, okay, that you had spoken to us, that you had spoken to the neighbors, you have never spoken to us.
No, I spoke to the other gentleman.
Okay, so why, okay, you've never approached us on anything, you approached them along the other side.
Right.
I don't know what you approached them on, okay, what you talked to them about, that's private, but to make a statement that you talked to all the neighbors, where you did not.
I said the neighbors.
And that's kind of, to me, that's a trustworthy thing, okay? I spoke on your behalf last time.
Right. I meant to say, I meant to limit that comment, maybe I misspoke, I meant to limit the comment.
You already spoke to Concom, and I'm done.
Okay, that's enough. Who else would like to be heard? I see no other hands or nods, so I'm going to assume that the public is satisfied at this point, and I now go back up here and ask first Ms. Clark whether she has any questions.
I do. So, if we're approaching it on a variance standpoint, one of the variances would be a side lot relief on the northeastern, northeasterly side lot. I have a question, and if you can look at your plan of the proposed house, you have one lot line that says 11.7, and then you have an additional 4.4.
Correct.
Now, is that a proposed deck for a building that you haven't designed yet? Because the, I think the side lot relief would have to be greater than the 11.7 to include the 4.4. What's the 4.4?
It's a combination. The way Joe Webby drew this plan, he drew the 4.4 separately, because he wanted to extend that line down to the pond at the extreme of the water side. So this came up, I think, at the last, or maybe the first hearing, you know, kind of once after a while. But the sideline variance would definitely be the combined of those two items.
So the combination?
Which would be 16.1.
Okay.
Definitely.
Okay, so that's not an anticipated maybe deck or something? Because if it was, then the side lot variance would be based on the 11.7?
No, it's 16.1.
Okay, so that would be to the side of the house.
Right.
Gotcha. So if anybody wanted to add a deck, they would be back here.
No, they couldn't do it there, without another here.
No, I said they'd be back here.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
You're right.
All right, thank you.
You're right.
So that clarifies that. On the, on the front setback, you're extending the previ, I mean, you're increasing the previous, oh, actually, it was conforming, if I'm reading the numbers right.
That's right.
It's over 50 feet.
This plan creates a new, new non-conformity, which takes it outside of the Dedrick and Comstock cases. So your question is what?
Because if you look at the corner of the old house, and if I add the 30 to the new to propose dwelling, and then add the 21.2 that you're showing as the side lot, if I'm doing my addition in my head correctly, that at least exceeds the 50 feet. So you're actually creating a non-conformity.
Correct.
Okay.
Expanding the existing non-conformity.
It's not an existing non-conformity, because it met, it met 50 feet.
The existing.
The existing house was 50 feet away from the street.
By being asked to move it up.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
By being asked to move it up.
Yeah, the existing house was conforming, I think, to the street.
This is her point.
Yeah, exactly.
And this was one of the things I mentioned.
Right. We're limiting one, but adding another.
So you're creating a hardship here.
Well, it's a new, it's the expansion of the non-conformity, that's the best way I would describe it.
You can't see it, but I'm smiling, so it's okay.
Well, like in the Gloucester case, there was two feet higher, and there was a new non-conformity, and they allowed it.
That's because Gloucester had a bylaw that was specific to height and spoke to special permits.
Right.
Within that bylaw.
That's true.
That's not what we have in this case.
They also had a non-conformity on both sidelines on the Gloucester.
And both Comstock and Dedrick speak to the fact that if you're creating a new non-conformity, then it's a variance situation, not a special permit situation.
Respectfully disagree, but go ahead.
Okay, well.
Respectfully. They did create a new non-conformity.
Ms. Clark, I'm sorry, I interrupted you. Go ahead.
And I do.
All right, well, I wanted to point that out, because you're looking over the plans, there, it was 50 feet, and now we're creating a front setback non-conformity.
That part is correct.
So we're needing a variance on the front setback.
Absolutely.
The shape of the lot can't do anything about it, the frontage is what it is, and the size is what it is. So it would require a variance of 50,000 square feet on the size, and 54 plus or minus?
55.
I am doing math like crazy over here, on the frontage. But those are what I see are the dimensional variances, unless somebody wants to jump in.
Let me see if I understand this correctly, and Mr. Mueller, assist as well. The front setback relief that would be needed would be rounding off 30 feet.
Correct.
Is that fair to say?
Yep.
The side setback relief on the northeastern side would be 15 feet? The side setback relief on the northeastern side would be 15 feet?
14.
14 feet.
It's 13.9 inches, but you throw out a 14.
So, 14, because he's got 16 on the other, 16 on the side currently?
Correct.
Is that right?
16.1. It's 13.9, actually, I think. Yeah, well, that's what you need, round it up.
So, 15.9 now, and you need 14.1. Everybody agree on that?
No, it's 16.1 now and 13.9 needed, yeah.
Okay, we've gone back and forth on this, so let me, so 13.9 needed.
Right.
And you got 16.1 now, right?
Correct.
Okay, I'm sorry, I wrote that down wrong. All right, now, frontage relief.
28.8.
28.8 what?
Feet. Front, oh, the front setback or frontage?
Frontage relief, we already did the front setback.
54.3.
That's what I got. You got 95.7 feet currently, and 150 is required. And then on lot size, coverage, you've got 10,000 feet plus or minus currently?
Mm-hmm.
You're going to need 50,000, because 60,000 feet is required. So, there are four dimensional variances that you require in this case. Does everybody up here agree with those numbers?
I do.
The last one would be probably described as area versus dimensional, I think, but we get the, we get the two, just as.
So, if we were to round these, on the front setback, because 29.8 feet is needed, let's round that to 30, if we're going to do this, is that fair to say?
Yep.
On the side setback, northeast side, 14 feet? Yes?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
On the frontage, call it 55 feet?
Yes.
And area, 50,000 plus or minus?
Yep.
Yes?
Yes.
No, 40,000. You have 50 requirements, so you got 10.
60.
You got 10 already, right?
No, we have 60,000.
We have 10, but we have 60.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. This is the area zone, yep, you're right.
Okay, so those would be the dimensional variances that would be on the table, as far as I'm concerned, because again, based on the case law, based upon our own bylaws, I don't see this as a special permit situation, I do not. However, Mr. Crea, you have said that for you, it doesn't really matter, so long as you get the relief you need, is that right?
That's true.
Okay, so, I ask the board up here again whether they have any final thoughts. This would be a 40A analysis.
My, I mean, it sounds like a lot, but we've actually done this before with these, you know, cottage lots and pond homes in the past here in Carver. And when I look at the pictures of what's there now, and if that was anywhere near me, I would want, I would want a pretty little house with a nice little family, and at least somebody cut the grass, or, you know, and take care of the wetlands as they need to be taken care of. So, I, you know, this is a big stretch, but I like this idea. I'm sorry, we don't actually see a building permit, most of the time you see a design of the house that they plan, but if it's, we're restricting it to this size and this size only, and it's small, 26, 24 by 30, two-story, I mean, it really can't be much, you know, 22 to three bedrooms, and the septic is a tight tank, is that what I'm seeing?
No, it's conventional system.
Regular conventional system with a well point. I think it would improve the neighborhood, but, you know, that's what I'm, we couldn't even take a sidewalk to get there to see it, so, it sounds like a lovely place back there, but I just, I don't even know where it is to look, they have it on the maps. But that's my thoughts right now.
Mr. Mueller?
Yeah, I think it's restricted to a two-bedroom anyway because of lot size, the septic, Eric, I'm sorry, it's restricted to a two-bedroom home, I believe, because of lot size, or the system design.
He's asking about the septic, they're limited to a two-bedroom home.
Yes, as a matter of fact, you're alleviating a concern about, it has to be a deeded, a deeded two-bedroom restriction.
Okay.
And that will be done subsequent to the permit being granted.
So, a board of health deeded a two-bedroom restriction?
Absolutely, absolutely. Now, it's a conventional system. In fact, if you reviewed the ConCon, they were, like, all the well is way down here, whatever, but they were allowing a pathway, even if it was grown over, to get to the well for servicing purposes. So, now, obviously, there's plenty of water in the area, we know that, too much maybe, but.
It's on the plan.
Yeah, two-bedroom restriction.
Oh, great, okay, that helps.
Mr. Mueller, back to you, anything further?
No.
Ms. Clark, anything further?
I don't know.
Ms. Mello?
Help?
Mr. Carley?
A couple of things that I'm sensitive about here in terms of your position. You have in good faith purchased this piece of property, you're looking to remove what, by all accounts, is an eyesore, and improve the lot, and by extension, the neighborhood. For you to be able to do this, you require relief, whether it be special permit, which I don't think is applicable, or by way of variance. And I understand further that at least one of the variances for which you're looking is because you complied with what you thought was the directive from the Conservation Commission. And in pushing the house away from the water, you got close enough to the road that now there's a new non-conformity that's been created, not an existing one, because it wasn't there before, where the old house was and where you had intended to build originally, but you moved that forward based on pressure that you thought you were getting, or suggestion, or however you want to characterize it. So, I am sensitive to the fact that, you know, you've made an investment here, and you want to move forward with that investment and maximize that investment. If you don't get the relief, then basically, you have an unbuildable tract of land. Would you agree with that, Mr. Crea?
I would.
Okay.
I would.
Well, in view of these things, which I believe amount to hardship if the relief isn't granted, and also in view of the fact that I think it will improve the neighborhood, although those are secondary and tertiary concerns, after the first concern, which is whether this falls under the 40A exception to topography, shape, or soil, which I think we all kind of feel that the soil one applies, I would be in favor of granting the variances that we have just discussed, my opinion.
Mr. Crea, would you like any final words before we close the hearing?
No, I appreciate that commentary, and, you know, I respect the input to doing that. I just want to say one thing that would support the overall thing. The non-conformity on the north side of this was made a little bit greater because of the locational septic, because we could have moved the house over, but the septic didn't allow that to happen.
And that's also a soil.
That's also a soil.
Yeah, that's a soil thing, too.
Yeah, it is, it is, it is, it is. So, in writing up a decision, I just want to make sure that maybe that was part of the logic.
Well, we'll put in what we think is appropriate.
Right, no one mentioned that, but I did want to cover it.
Okay. If no one else has anything further to say, do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
So, move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so I have a number of findings that I would suggest that the board make, given the circumstances of this case, and I'm going to read them off, and then after I'm done reading each one off, I'm going to ask for a motion and a second, and then we'll vote on these findings as they come. Mr. Carley, you can relax, because I'll give you some. One of you should move that the subject property on which sits a derelict and abandoned house that has been unoccupied and uninhabitable for at least 10 years and would be raised by the petitioner is part of the proposed project, is abandoned and/or not used within the meaning of 2255 of the Carver zoning bylaw and/or applicable case law, and that therefore the subject property has lost its protected status as a pre-existing non-conforming lot.
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Second finding that I would suggest the board make, that the board finds that per 2255 of the Carver zoning bylaw, the subject property is now subject to all of the provisions of current zoning.
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next finding, that the board finds that the sighting of the proposed construction introduces a new dimensional non-conformity, that being the front setback as we've discussed.
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, the board finds that owing to circumstances relating to soil conditions, shape, and/or topography of the structures or lot, but not affecting the district generally, a literal enforcement of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship to the petitioner, and a relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw.
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, these four findings that will undergird our decision now have been approved unanimously. Let's go to the decision. I'd like a motion from somebody that the board should approve the request for dimensional variance relief, which I'll specify in a minute.
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I ask for a motion that the following variances be granted, and there are four. One, 30 feet of front setback relief, and please again check me on these dimensions as I go through. 30 feet of front setback relief. Second, 14 feet of setback relief on the northeast side of the proposed construction. Third, 55 feet of frontage relief. And fourth, 50,000 feet plus or minus of area or lot size relief. Those would be the four dimensional variances. Do I hear a motion to grant?
Can I add?
Yes.
As per the plan submitted, dated 10/15/2020. 10/15/2020. We're basing our dimensional relief on this plan.
So, I think she moved. Did you move?
No, I just made an amendment, I just added, so I will second.
But you moved.
I do.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, you have your dimensional variances as per the plan submitted to us dated 10/15/2020. Are there any conditions that the board members would like to add at this time?
Uh, no.
Okay. Before we leave this matter behind, Mr. Crea, by the way, congratulations, it's been an odyssey, but I would direct your attention to page 173 of the Comstock case, and you'll see an important sentence in there about how special permit does not apply in cases where new non-conformities are being created. This is not an existing non-conformity that's being created here by moving that house forward, this is a brand-new one. And that's, that's the thing that distinguishes these cases from the position that you've taken with this board, in my opinion. But having said that, that's all water under the dam now, isn't it? Because you have your variances, congratulations again, and thank you for your patience and your scholarship, and we wish you well.
Thank the board for the time and effort, I know this, you know, was a, some relatively small project by standards of some things you guys did, but I appreciate the effort, three meetings and a lot of extra time, and especially a special meeting, I feel like, you know, I feel guilty to have to have a special meeting, but nonetheless, I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is a big correspondence.
Good.
The only correspondence that we have received, or that I know that I've received, has been the third memo on the last case, which has become part of the case file. Oh, we have, we have another one, this is interesting. This is unrelated to any cases that's come before us or will come before us, but we have a letter here from a Paul Rivard, who's from Middleborough, and he is a Jehovah's Witness, and he wants to proselytize, and has sent all of us a watchtower pamphlet for us to read through if we're interested. So, if anybody is interested, you may find it in the board file for this evening. Does anyone else have anything that they would like to say? I will take this opportunity to thank all of us who are here tonight for working as diligently as they did through the technical legal issues that this last case presented. What we do here sometimes is very complicated, and working through issues like this can be challenging for laypeople. Fortunately, I don't have laypeople on this board. We've all been here long enough to kind of get a sense as to how these cases should be handled, and how they have been handled in the past, and for anything technical like case interpretation that we went through on this one. I want to thank all of you for kind of plowing through this and getting to the nub of the issue or issues here. So, having said that, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, Carver.
Thank you.